Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Connors. I'm the mayor of Titusville, and I'm going to call this meeting to order, the regular city council meeting on November 26, 2024 at 6:30. Please join me in a moment of silence for our invocation. All right, will you all please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seeing we have a quorum present, we're going to move right along. I would like to ask for a motion to move Agenda Item Number 14 up to right now, please.
Sir, if we could have the clerk read the rules for the meetings.
Oh, my bad. Sorry, I forgot about the rules.
The following is the procedure for public comment. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to city councils shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. I apologize. I did not mean to skip you. And again, I would like to ask for, if anybody can make a motion, to move Item Number 14. Mayor and Council reports?
Move to move that item.
Paul Witz?
He asked for a motion, I believe.
Second.
Who made the motion? Can you repeat your motion, Vice Mayor Cole?
I move that we move that agenda item up on the agenda.
Where do you, would you like to move it, sir?
To the beginning.
Okay.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what was the agenda item?
14.
14. Mayor and Council reports. Any discussion? Vote? City Clerk, can you call a vote, please?
Member Muskoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll move right into Agenda Item Number 14, Mayor and Council's report. The mayor's report will be first. Thank you, guys, all for being here, which is my first night as the mayor for the great city of Titusville. I'm really happy that you guys are all here. I wanted to take this opportunity while everybody's here are not sleepy-eyed, as it gets late into the night sometimes, just to kick off this new council with my vision and allow the other council members to speak on their vision for what they're hoping to accomplish up here. I believe that the mayor's responsibility is not just to take care of business here at home, but to advocate for the citizens of Titusville, to the larger entities, being Brevard County, the state of Florida, and even Washington DC if necessary. In the meantime that I've been mayor-elect, I've had meetings with county officials to discuss various different topics, including advocating for the boys at the DAV, to working on improving our communication with our boundaries and try to clean some of that stuff up. I also have a meeting planned with Laura Lee to discuss increased funding for Save Our Lagoon, because that is very, very important to us. I also believe that we need to work on a joint planning agreement with the county to allow us to access greater funds through different grant vehicles that we don't currently have access to. I also believe that we are maybe getting a little short-sighted on the tourism tax dollars that come down from Tallahassee. Titusville currently gets $25,000, and yet our hotel room rates are just as high as anywhere else. Three new hotels are coming online. Why are we not getting our fair share? These are all questions that I will be advocating and asking for to the county and to state officials to make sure that we can beautify our city, keep the lights on, get streets paved, and all those things. And yes, that even encompasses fighting the big trains. Come on, that was worth a joke. I mean, come on, trains. And then, of course, we all have to keep in mind the passage of State Amendment Number Five, and to refresh your memory, that allowed for basically a greater exemption on your homestead at the state level. And unfortunately, what that means for cities and for counties means a reduced budget. So how do we accomplish all the things that we want to accomplish with less money to do it with? So I believe as mayor, I need to look for additional sources of revenue that do not include increasing taxation, and so we're going to be exploring all available alternatives. Since I've been elected, I've helped secure a large donation for the Women's Center in Titusville, so that they can remain protecting vulnerable women and children here in our city. Again, working with the DAV, they'll be talking in a little bit. I've helped the Chamber and YMCA in the respective golf outings. I helped raise money for the Children's Advocacy Center and their famous James Bond event. And today, I helped present a check from the Three Rotarys to the Boys and Girls Club here in Titusville. And then, after that, I served meals on Garden Street at McDonald's to help our most vulnerable population, which is our homeless. And I have more things coming on that, as I had the opportunity to go out with our community service unit and our police department that's doing God's work in our community to help those most affected by tragedy. In addition, I have some loftier goals that I want to address. I believe it's time for our city to have a charter review, and that's something that will come up in discussion, I'm sure. But our charter was written in the 60s when we had 10,000 people. I think it's time that we at least put a process in place to review our charter on a regular basis, much like the county does, so that we can make sure our formal government is working for our people. I also believe that we need a lobbyist registration for our city, so that we can be transparent in everything that we do for our people. In addition with government transparency, I believe that the city should hire a PIO, and I believe they're in process of doing that, to help over-communicate to our citizens. Because unfortunately, if the people are getting their information from the talk of Titusville and not the city of Titusville, no offense to Michael, but that's a problem. We need to make sure people are getting information right from the source, so they know what's going on. And with that, that concludes my opening report, and what I hope is a clear vision for the future of Titusville. And now I'll turn it over to anybody else that would like to make a report. Member Stokel?
Well, thank you for actually moving this item to the beginning. That's not happened in the eight years that I've been on. And I must say, just from being on and prior, I can't speak for Vice Mayor, but I think sometimes, especially when our meetings would go long, this portion of the time of the meeting went rather quickly, and I think it was because we were all tired from conducting the business that we would do. And so, I'm thankful to do this, because I had some notes that I wanted to share at the end of the meeting, but I didn't know how well they would go, since we, I don't, hopefully, we won't be here too long. I also think, too, just since I've been on council for eight years, each time that I've been re-elected, I have new goals of things that I want to focus on. When I was first running, it was real, back in 2016, it was really about growth, 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 because we didn't have, as the mayor pointed out earlier today, we had six, seven projects on the books at that time. Now we have 60. So my priorities have changed a little bit. And so, some things you mentioned, I actually did have on my list. Not that we're doing things incorrectly, but I believe in continuous improvement. That's what I do in my full-time job. So, my ask was going to be, not at this meeting, but it would be my hope that maybe at the first of the year, that each of us can share kind of what we hope to accomplish in 2025. Maybe not our full term, but let's think specifically for that year and see where we are in alignment. We set our goals, like we have the six strategic goals right now, community design, economic development, financial stability, quality of life. Those are very broad goals, but it's sometimes, for me at least, it's been hard to actually, what does that mean? What does that look like? What are we actually doing as council members, mayor, and vice mayor? Some of the things that are on my list, that I, just from talking to citizens, watching social media, going to conferences, that I would like us to focus on, one, you touched on it a little bit, increasing our revenue. I advocate at every budget cycle, I do not want to raise taxes. My goal for 2025 would be to lower taxes. With that, if we do want to accomplish that, we need to look at how can we increase our revenue sources. I know we've grown in our grants. I want to see us get state appropriations this year. And again, you touched on it, I think, with the lobbyist, potentially hiring a lobbyist at the, for lobby at the state level could help us with getting state appropriations. Also, with state lobbying, I would like to see more assistance and help with the Live Local that's happening. Just from my involvement with the Florida League of Cities, they're talking about now, what can we do to potentially protect single-family zoning? That's a topic. So if we had a lobbyist, again, on staff, that could be something that, what is our vision? Is it saving commercial? Is it saving our green space? That we could communicate to our lobbyists that I don't think any of us have time to go do in Tallahassee right now. The other thing that's getting brought up at the state level that they're looking at, this was brought up last session, is building code and like building permits turnaround times. They really wanted to kind of move those up, because they're getting a lot of feedback from developers. And so, if that's going to be happening, I want us to be ahead of that. What does that mean? Have those conversations with our staff. What's that actually look like? They were looking at three calendar days. So keep that in mind when you think about weekends and holidays. That would just wouldn't have been possible to do. So it's really important, again, that we stay in the know with what's happening. And then, the homelessness, and we know with the passage of the bill, we need to do something. I think a lot of it's falling on the county, but I feel like us as a municipality, at this local city level, we need to partner with the county. I mentioned this in the presentation meeting. A big part of what we do up here, I believe, is the community development side of things. That has to do with our comp plan, land use changes, and rezonings. That is the majority, in my opinion, of what our time is spent at our meetings. And I'd like to see us kind of look at that process as we have meetings, as we talk to citizens on what's important to them. We prioritize, as a council, again, do we want to preserve commercial? Where would our green spaces be? And then, what does that process look like in terms of our staff time? Do we need to revisit that process? Do we need to, what are the turnaround times? And I know we're hiring somebody on, but I will tell you, I've had several talks with different people five months before they can get heard. They put an application in, and it might be a year before something actually happens. And I just want us to look at that process a little bit more to make sure we're meeting those needs. In terms of lowering taxes, one of the sessions I attended at the National League of Cities was on priority-based budgeting. And one of the companies there, they have software that can come in and kind of look at your budget. AI fits into this really well, too. You can kind of upload your budget and see, and it can, AI could potentially tell you what your priorities are based on your budget, which is really cool to think about. They also go in and look and say, okay, what are our priorities as council? And let's build the budget to align with that with the departments and see. And they've had municipalities actually save up to 10% of their budget doing that. So that's something I would like to look at. You mentioned this with social media, community engagement, surveys, transparency. I talked with another vendor called FlashVote, where they do strategic surveys throughout the year. There's way to put in metrics to make sure if you want to single out which citizens are getting it, if it's your city of Titusville residents, if it's other people in the county, which may be important, but we could kind of differentiate between that. What's important to your community? And then, what do they feel like is a strength of the city, and see where there could be some room for improvement. Water quality in the lagoon, I think, remains at our top priority. I think we are doing a lot. I think there's always more we can do to improve. It's bigger beyond Titusville, in my opinion, but I think the things that we're doing, we need to be strategic about how we're communicating that to the public, because I think a lot of the terminology, if you're not in it, and you're, and I'm not an environmental expert by any means, can be a little hard to understand. And I wish that we can communicate things better from that standpoint. Infrastructure, the AI, and then the last thing, I think, too, just, I hope to remain involved at the Florida League of Cities. Right now, I'm serving on their educational committee, and they're really looking at revamping, which I'm, I've kind of pushed for this. What can they do at the state level to help us do our jobs better? So I'd like us to think about that, too, again, using those resources that they have at the state level to say, hey, we really need training on this, or we need resources. We need to know what other municipalities in Florida are doing that can help us. So that's kind of what I'm thinking right now. And again, I'd like to, maybe at the beginning of the year, potentially, like us to have that discussion and say, okay, like, what is it that we want to focus on this year? And just have that open dialogue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Muskoso?
Yes. Good evening. So I have this little plaque. I don't know if you can see. It says, "Elected by the people to serve the people." And I have the number of people that voted, 13,481 people that chose me to represent. And I take that seriously. And the one thing I heard as I was campaigning, and the one thing I think we can do right now is to put the right to clean water in our city charter. I was thinking this would happen towards the end of the meeting, but I would like to make a motion, because I do want to respect the 82% of our voters who voted for it to be in our charter. So I would like to make a motion, and I move to dismiss the current appeal related to the right to clean water, and direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents to incorporate the right to clean water into the city charter, as authorized by the voters.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Seeing no second, motion fails. Vice Mayor Cole?
One of the things that I feel is an extreme priority, and the problem with going last is that everybody's said everything. And I think when you look up here at our council, our age has changed a lot, except my age is, I'm getting younger. I'm like Benjamin Button. But the thing, the things that's utmost on my mind is the unhoused communities. And our police department has been very proactive in forming a team to go out in the community. And I was, I had the opportunity to go out with them about a month ago. And we went to some of our unhoused areas, and it was just amazing, the number of areas we have within Titusville. The thing about it, when our police department goes out, they have handouts, which they, they give to the individuals. If they need drug help, there are places that they can go to receive this. If they're homeless, we give them information on where they can find adequate housing. So we're trying to work the problem, but it's not a problem that's endemic to Titusville. It's a problem that's a worldwide problem. And we can't solve that problem ourselves within Titusville, but we could do a little to help the situation. The other thing is the low-income housing. We do need housing for low income. The Live Local app can help that a lot, too. So those are the kinds of things I want to focus on. And I want to focus on everything that has been mentioned up here by council today, because I think that we can move forward and make Titusville one of the best communities within Brevard County.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. City Manager?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. And again, Councilmember Jo Lynn Nelson is under the weather, so she let us know that she will not be attending this evening. We are on Item 6A, which is the Board of Trustees for the General Employees' Pension Plans. The term of member Terry Tolbert expires on 30 November 2024. He has expressed a willingness and a desire to continue to serve on this board for a three-year term to expire on 30 November 2027. In addition, Stan Retsch was appointed by the remaining four trustees of the Board of Trustees of the General Employees Pension Plan to serve an additional three years for a term to expire on November 30, 2027. This appointment was made on August 20, 2024, and must be confirmed by a city council. Staff recommends that city council appoint one member to the trust, Board of Trustees of the General Employee Pension Plan for a three-year term to expire on November 30, 2027, and confirm one member chosen by the majority of the four remaining trustees of the General Employee Pension Plan for a term to expire on November 30, 2027.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there any cards?
Yes, sir. One card, Elizabeth Baker.
Hello, guys. Elizabeth Baker, Titusville resident. Section 2.51 of the Board of Appointments Policy from the city states that it is the general policy of the city council in the appointment of a person to a board, commission, or committee, to permit a person to serve on only one board, commission, or committee. Currently, Mr. Retsch, though I'm sure that he is qualified, is serving on both the hospital board and the in-beds board. That does raise some questions about conflicts of interest. It raises some questions for a lot of people. I've had about 20 people call me about this today. Mr. Retsch has also audited several Brevard County government entities, including the city of Titusville, Brevard County Sheriff's Office, the Tax Collector, County Appraiser, and the Supervisor of Election. He has also assisted the Titusville Police Department in contract negotiations and budget planning. I am concerned that this could foster some unfavorable camaraderie, at the very least, look bad to the public. So I am not real sure what's happening with over 49,000 residents. We have a lot of diverse viewpoints and views and backgrounds and education levels in this city. I don't know why we continue to just recycle the same people over and over again on boards, when we have a very large pool of wonderful people in this city that would probably be willing to step up and serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Member Stokel?
Yes. Actually, that kind of brings up a comment that I was going to make concerning the boards. I think, especially now that we have two new members on our council, I think it might be in our best interest to look at a roster of everyone that's serving on our boards. I don't know if the new members have done that yet or not. To the person that spoke, looking at some of the rules, making sure that we are abiding by the rules, who's serving on what boards. I just feel like now would be a good time that we have new council members on to take a look at our boards, again, who's serving. And my, I was actually going to say, I would move to kind of table all, all three of these, A, B, and C, until we, as a council, could get that list and have discussion on our boards.
I second the motion.
If I could, 6B is a leave of absence. It's not an appointment.
Okay.
And I would, I would like council to take each time.
So I, yeah.
One at a time, because there may be cards on each one.
Yeah, I would, I was, I can just do A right now and then move. Yeah. So my motion would be to table Item 6A. Do I have to do a time certain to, gosh, and this one expires at the end of the?
I do not know when the current. So if you want to table it, do you want to, for each of these, include that the members will continue to serve until you bring it back? You might have a situation where these members, I don't know the situation, but if you're going to table it.
Okay.
I want to take that into consideration.
Okay. So I guess I would move to table this and allow the members to continue to serve until we have the opportunity to look at the rosters of all of our boards and have that discussion. And we can bring this item back up at our next council meeting, and if we need to table it again, we could at that point.
That would be December 10.
To December 10.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do have a, I'm sorry. I do have a question for Mr. Broome. I know that we are going to table this, but how would, I think Ms. Baker mentioned Section 251 of our Code of Ordinances. How would that apply to Mr. Retsch and his appointment?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that section applies to city appointments, to city boards. Several of those boards are not city boards, like in-beds or the hospital. And this, I believe Mr. Retsch, from reading this agenda item, was chosen by a majority of the trustees of the pension plan to serve on their board. So we could look at that, certainly, and the application of that with regard to the fact that this is us confirming their appointment.
Okay.
But certainly can look at all the boards, and that's a policy, a general policy of council, so you do take into consideration all of those things when you decide to make an appointment.
But I'd like that to be a part of our discussion as well.
Yeah. And I would agree with Member Stokel. One thing I would add to that, I think we should review our boards, but I think that information should be on our city website. I was actually curious to see who sat on what board, and without emailing the clerk, I wasn't able to find that information readily. And so if we could have that information of who's serving on these different boards, and if I can't find it, I think it's going to be difficult for the public to find it as well. So that would be something I'd like to possibly discuss as well.
All right. So I have a motion from Member Stokel. I have a second from Vice Mayor Cole. I don't think there's any other discussion. Clerk, call a vote, please.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Muskoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. Vice Mayor Cole?
I understand what you're saying about the recycling of members. The one of the problems that we have is the fact that people are not submitting for the various boards. Oftentimes, we may have one person submitting for two vacancies. So consequently, we end up people who want to do the job, you know? So, no, I'm just making a statement. You don't have to get back up unless you.
No, I would like to address it, just because I am a resident here, and I can tell you that I didn't see any advertisement for this anywhere. I see advertisements for the Christmas parade, but not that. So, I mean, there are ways to reach the public, and, you know, maybe working with people like Michael Lynch, Talk at Titusville, making sure that information is getting out there to the people. I mean, he, unfortunately, you know, that Facebook group is reaching people. So there is a way to navigate through that by using the tools that are already available to you guys. The residents want to help. We want to be an active The residents want to help. We want to be an active part of this community. So, and I think there's probably a lot more out there that could be inspired to step up and sit on a board or give their input if they just knew that it was available.
Thank you. Alrighty, we tabled A and we tabled C. Oh, my bad. I thought that was included in the motion. All right, let's move on to, to B.
Okay. Item B is the Titusville Environmental Commission Leave of Absence. The Titusville Environmental Commission Regular Member Hector Delgado has requested a leave of absence from the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings for the months of January and February 2025. His memo is attached for your consideration.
So, Member Moscoso?
I'd like to move, to approve the request for leave of absence from-
City Clerk, card please.
Uh, yes sir. We have two cards. The first is Kay St. Orange. Excuse me, Michael Mijak.
Good evening, Mayor. Congratulations. Vice Mayor, congratulations. Sarah, Megan, all y'all. I cannot tell you, as Michael Mijak, by the way, 4420 Alpine Lane and Chair of your Environmental Commission, now for over 10 years, Hector has been one heck of a godsend to us. Can you imagine the chief scientist at NASA on your environmental commission? Well, that's who Hector is. And he brings a wealth and depth and breadth of knowledge in a variety of areas. And I sure hope that you will grant him this passage so he can have his sojourn and come back refreshed in a couple of months to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mijak. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, I'd like to make-
Are you talking about me?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we grant a leave of absence for Member Hector Delgado, his request for a two-months leave.
I'll second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Vice Mayor Cole, is there any discussion? Clerk, can you call the vote please?
Uh, yes sir. Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
There was a discussion to table 6C.
Yes, I, I would like to do that. I'm sure there might be cards on it, but after the cards, that would more than likely still be my motion to table.
Cards please.
Uh, yes sir. We have four cards. The first is Ms. Toni Shifalo.
Shifalo Historic Norwood House. I, as a member of one of your advisory boards, come tonight to be a cheerleader for the reappointing of these four members. Instead of tabling it, Ms. Stoful, um, why cripple the work that this group is doing? I came to say, don't look at the fact that there weren't many other applicants other than the one to fill the empty position. Look at it at the enthusiasm and the commitment that these four people that are standing for reappointment bring to the committee. The Environmental Commission is just beginning to feel its strength and to be able to move forward with projects that are bettering Titusville. And all of the citizens are benefiting from it. Don't handicap their work by tabling their reappointment just because you can't decide about the fellow that's been on the board for over 20 years. These people, even though they've been there for a while, it does take time to get into the strength and the abilities that an advisory board has. And to exercise that kind of power to bring them to council, that kind of knowledge and, and insight and research and, and advice is so valuable to the decisions that you have to make in your thousand-page agendas every week. I mean, I read them. I'm not sure that you have time. I really think it's important to move forward with this board's reappointment, your Environmental Commission, because of the fact that the river is dying more every day despite all the efforts that we are trying. Don't handicap them. Don't stop the movement forward. Reappoint these people. They're experts and come to the meetings and listen to them and watch the, the negotiation and the depth of research that they bring and the knowledge that they have on environmental issues. I can't stress it enough that to what benefit to all of us the reappointment of, of these four people would be. Thank you.
Thank you Toni. Next card?
Uh, yes, Elizabeth Baker.
Elizabeth Baker, Titusville, Florida. Back to the original point that I had about the boards. I am interested in seeing how the city actually does promote these boards and the vacancies. Cause I'm not seeing it and I have been pretty active. I've been pretty engaged. I'm somebody that does show up to city meetings. I do look at the agendas. I try to pay attention as much as I can. And it's, it's, it's almost non-existent to see where these things are. If it wasn't for the fact that I was really digging in, I wouldn't know. Also, I, I want to just throw out there that I really, I, I know that there's somebody who said that they, they're a non-resident applying to be on board. I have no problem with that, but I do think that maybe we should revisit how we're publicizing these to the people that actually live within the city limits. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth. Next card?
Hello, Michael Mijak. Can you hear me in the back row now?
Push it up.
Yes, hello. Push it up. Okay, is that better? Boy, okay. What am I here for? Oh, TEC members. Oh my God. Let me tell you, um, the team that we have on the Environmental Commission is, is second to none in the county. I hope you guys realize that. I mean, Laura Lee on the Fisheries Council for the state of Florida, Tom Perez, who worked for Health and Human Services as a pharmacist for, I don't know how many decades. You want to know about pharmaceuticals in our water? Tom's the guy that's going to help us figure that out. We have, I mean, Yvette Fleece. She's, she works in, in science, in laboratories. She's a chemist. She understands how to do testing. Who better to have on your TEC? And, and Beth Anne, she's been there longer than I have. I mean, she's, she has the history now of this group by a few years. But still, you know, these people need to be reaffirmed. And I haven't met the new applicant. I wish we had lots of applicants. I bet you if we had the TEC on every YouTube channel, every time we played, you would have a lot more people getting engaged in the city and you'd have more applicants. But for now, please approve these and let us get on with our work and stop stopping our December meetings. We have work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kay St. Orange.
Kay St. Orange, Maryland Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Connors. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I'm truly puzzled by Sarah's desire to create a motion to table the TEC's appointments. I'm puzzled. I would like to know before I speak, but anyways, uh, this is what I came to prepare to, to speak with you about today and so I will. Tom Perez is my friend. When we were both in the Titusville Sailing Club, we used to enjoy sailing, sunfish together in the lagoon off Sandpoint Park. We learned we both have a love of nature, trees and the lagoon. Tom and his wife Kate have a lovely home right on the lagoon with a boat or two at their dock. Tom knows what the decline of the lagoon has meant to the residents of Titusville. It is no longer safe to sail small boats here, having the spray from the lagoon drench your face. Tom knows the decline in seagrass caused thousands of manatees to die as he helped the Fish and Wildlife Service haul a dead emaciated manatee out of the lagoon by his dock. Every time the Titusville Tree Team plants mangroves and canopy trees in city-owned parks at no expense to the city or the county to reduce stormwater runoff into the lagoon, Tom is right there digging holes. He has watered the trees for weeks on end. Tuesdays, you will find Tom volunteering at the Titusville Garden Club Tree Farm propagating and tending plants. Recently, we volunteered together landscaping the north of our charities' properties. Tom is a retired pharmacist. He is concerned about the health of Titusville residents. He knows that unless we have a healthy environment in our community, we cannot expect our residents to be healthy. Tom has been on the Titusville Environmental Commission since 2019. He does his homework. He researches the various environmental topics discussed by this committee and is prepared to contribute. He makes motions, articulating the language of the motion concisely. Tom also served on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Tom is a service-oriented person with a love for the environment. Tom is just the right person to be on the Titusville Environmental Commission. Reappoint Tom Perez to the TEC. Reappoint Laura Lee. Reappoint Beth Anne. Reappoint Yvette Fleece. Do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Any other cards?
Uh, yes sir. One additional card. Stu Buchanan?
Mayor and City Council, my name is Stu Buchanan. I am a Titusville resident. In fact, I, I live right on the lagoon. The, the question and the, the discussion that the City Council has had tonight has nothing to do with the merits of the people that are on the advisory committee. I'm sure they're all extremely well-qualified and in fact, I could foresee all of them getting reappointed. However, you've got four City Council members here tonight, two of whom have only been in office 12 hours and unless I'm wrong, have never been in elected office before. And to ask them to make a decision on those board appointments in their first 12 hours of sitting in, in their seats, I don't agree with. I believe no one's saying, questioning the merits of the people that's on the board. In fact, I could foresee them all being reelected, or I'm sorry, reappointed. But to ask with four members present, two of whom are brand-new, two of which have ever, never held elected office again, to ask them to make that decision, I, I, I don't think that's fair to the rest of us that who are residents of the city, who do live on the lagoon. And I would ask that you entertain Councilman Stokel's motion. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stu. Any other cards?
Uh, no sir.
Okay. Member Moscoso?
Yes, um, thank you for that comment. I would say that we are going to be asked to make bigger decisions than reappointing the Environmental Commission and that's what we were elected to do. And I want to say to the TEC, I have been involved for two years, serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Often when I have concerns, I've reached out to Mr. Mijak, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Perez and Ms. St. Orange. And so I can, I can't speak for Mr. Connors, but I can speak for myself that I, I know them. I know their character and I've seen their work and I will continue to rely on them.
Member Stokel?
Yep. Um, I'm still going to move forward with my motion to table. A couple of things I just want to bring up. When I first was elected, we didn't really have discussion on boards and I felt like when I was in my seat, it was, we just had a membership, like person apply and we just voted them in. And it took me a minute to really see like, okay, wait, these are our advisory boards to help us do our job. And again, I'm taking this opportunity with a new election cycle for us to reiterate that these are our advisory boards to help us do our job. And with that, there's some things that I'd like to know before we move forward with the reappointment. One, I'd like to know and have clarification on which boards are ours and which ones are the counties. Um, I'd like to know the rules regarding non-residents serving on our boards. And can, can people be a part of multiple boards? Um, and I'd also fourth, like to know, um, what the other municipalities in our county, what advisory boards they have in case we may want to add an additional advisory board. And lastly, this was brought up by a citizen, I'd like to see us advertise these positions. Um, I can tell you just today, this morning, somebody came up to me wanting to get on a board. And again, it's, those conversations, I don't know if you guys have had those conversations and to the point that was brought up, are we advertising them? Clearly, we don't have them on our website. So those are the five things that I would like to have happen and for us to make an informed decision. So my motion would be to table this item, continue to allow these members to serve until we make our decision and we will discuss again at our next meeting, December 10th.
Second.
I was about to say I have a motion, but now I already have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like some clarification. Is it possible that we have tabled A and then this one we don't have to table? Because it appears that on A, 6A, we're going to have the same discussion.
The question is, if, if the question is, do you have to table this? No, you could treat each item independently.
Okay.
You're, you're not required to vote a certain way on this item.
Yeah. 6A was already tabled to our next regular city council meeting and now there's a motion and a second to table Item 6C, the reappointment to the four members to the TEC. Would that be? I'm sorry, I'm new with this microphone. There, 6A was already tabled. Now we're moving on to 6C, which I have a motion and I have a second to have a vote to table the reappointment of the four regular members of the TEC. Clerk, can you call the vote please?
Can we clarify the date of tabling? Was it this? The 10th, at this meeting? Okay, 6. I'd also like to clarify as before is that the, the members that are currently serving, because their term may expire between now and then, that they continue to serve pending your handling of that.
Yes, that was part of my motion.
All right, everybody clear on the motion? Clerk, can you call the vote please?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
No.
And Mayor Connors?
Yes. Motion carries. It is tabled.
Next item is petitions and requests from the public, present non-agenda items.
Good evening. My name is Stu Buchanan. I am a Titusville resident. I am here tonight with Commander John Dunn of the local Disabled American Veterans. They provide a service to the residents of the city. If they were not here in the City of Titusville, many of our residents would be forced to travel to Vieira to go to the VA offices there. They have been so successful in helping our residents and in training volunteers, they need more space. Specifically, they need to build more office space so they can serve more clients. Directly adjacent to their existing facility is a county, vacant county-owned parcel. So I met with the county manager's office and they asked that the nonprofit send them a letter requesting that the county donate that parcel of land to the DAV. They also suggested that it would be helpful if the mayor and city council were to send a letter of support saying, talking about the DAV and the work that they do for our residents. So what we're here tonight to ask you to do is to authorize your mayor to execute a letter of support on the good work that DAV does to our residents. That's all. And Commander John Dunn is here to answer any questions that you have about the activities his nonprofit does. And I believe you've all been given a copy of their request. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Member Stokel?
Yes, so I just want to clarify. So at your current site, right next to it, it's a county-owned. You're on city property right now?
No, they're on their own property.
Is it city or county? Do we know?
It's, it's, both parcels are in the city limit. The vacant parcel next to them is owned by the county, but it isn't the city limits.
Okay, so in, okay. And so you're requesting that you want the county to give it over to the city?
No. The, the county is going to, we're requesting the county give it directly to the nonprofit, which they- which they can do.
They can do, okay.
Absolutely. The only thing that the county manager's office suggested was that we would get a letter of support from the mayor and the city council of Titusville saying what good work their organization does. That's really your only role in this. Everything else, the property transfer is strictly between the county and the nonprofit. The county has done this recently.
So the county owns the piece of property?
Yes, they do.
It's in the city limits, and the county owns it?
Yes, I know.
Okay, thank you. I got it now, I got it.
And the county recently did this in downtown Titusville. They donated a vacant parcel of land to a local church.
Okay.
So perhaps as we deliberate here, could we have a little more clarification? You said you wanted the county property to expand your operation?
Exactly.
Okay.
So there, it's a budding, and they need that, the vacant county property to build additional office space.
Might be a good opportunity to explain to us what their operations are. That'd be great to hear.
I'm John Dunn, commander of the A V, Chapter 109 here in Titusville. We're, we are the most active chapter in the state. We're currently, I've got 17 service officers. Our job is to help veterans and their families obtain benefits that they've earned. We're open six days a week just doing that. On top of that, we operate a fully stocked food pantry for our veterans. We offer a door-to-door fan service, take veterans from their homes to any of the VA facilities or community care sites that the VA authorizes. I'm going to, let me see. We've, we support all the hospitals from Orlando to Fort Lauderdale, between us and our auxiliary, for the domiciles, for toiletries, socks, anything that they request, we get sent to them. We offer a free lunch every day for veterans and their families from 11:00 to 1:00. We've got several of our elderly veterans, a couple of WWII veterans come in and see us every day just to have lunch with us. We offer Veterans Appreciation Day, second Saturday of every month, where we get the veterans and our local community to come join us and have just a cookout, sit around, tell stories. We have a guitars-for-veterans program where we actually now supply the whole county with that. But if I got veterans with PTSD, they can come in. We'll teach them how to play the guitar. After 10 lessons, they get a guitar and all the, all the associated pieces and parts to it. And then we get together on Veterans Appreciation Day with those and sit around and you know, picking and granning. We are, we have the giveaway scooters and motorized wheelchairs, medical equipment. As it comes to dust, we refurb it, and we'll give it to veterans in need. We've got a D A V and D A V A scholarships available. We also, if we have a veteran who's passed away and he's buried up at the national cemetery, we offer our hall for, you know, for memorial or a wake at no charge to the veteran's family. We offer our hall when it's available to just members of our community if they need to use it. We've got an 8,500-square-foot facility there. But like I said, I do need, we're having so many service officers. We're seeing about 200 veterans for claims a month. I've got two offices that are small. We'd like to be able to expand. I've got three chaplains in the group that handle a gravesite at the national cemetery, if needed, at no charge to the veteran's family. We support the women's transition housing. We support rock pit, rock pit veterans housing. And anything else, we can help a veteran, we will.
Thank you very much, sir. Before I call on Member Stokel, I just want to say thank you for everything that you do for our veterans here in Titusville and North Brevard. As somebody who's new to learning government bureaucracy, I can't imagine figuring out the D A V. So the work you guys do to get the veterans their earned benefits is simply amazing.
Yep.
Member Stokel.
Yes. Side comment that I have just on what you said. I had somebody recently ask me if they could, if I knew someplace to donate a scooter. Can we, can she donate to you potentially?
We'll take them.
Okay, thank you.
The batteries in them, fix them up, and we'll give them out.
Thank you for that. Secondly, and you may not know this, do you know if the land is already zoned properly for what you want to do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my only other question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. That being said? Oh, hold on. I gotta ask for a motion first. Can I have a motion to write a letter in support to the county to donate that piece of property to them?
Yes, I'd make a motion that we write a letter to the county in support of the D A V and their property acquisition.
Second.
Any cards?
Uh, no, sir, as this is coming up under petitions.
All right, so it might be appropriate, since they didn't have time to have cards, if anyone does want to speak to this item, have an opportunity to speak.
All right, seeing none. Any other discussion? Clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Member Stokel? Yes. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, members, city councilmen. Congratulations. My name is Lynn Golden, and I am the president of the Concerned Citizen Group, which you all will see my shirt. And I'm here tonight concerning some issues that we have in our community. Tonight, we have more, we have some members, would you please send all the Concerned Citizen Group that came tonight? Thank you. You may be seated. We, we have many more, but because you had the meeting so close to Thanksgiving, a lot of them went out of town. This group was established in 1992 by Stalin Bryant that started this group. Many of these members are still with us. We have a new group, which I am the president, and my classmate Kirk Davis is vice president. When they started this meeting in 1992, Chief Jerry Eadsen, E A D S, attended this meeting back in the days to come and see what solution we could do in our community. And as president now, we're having meetings, and we would like for you, city councilmen, to put our, on your agenda about the C D B G funding. We still have plenty of members. We have a 100-year-old Net C L Moore is still participating. And we have a 96-year-old sister Evelyn Bell that is still participating in our group meeting. And so tonight, we would like to demand that you, and I see Counselor Connor's eyes flew up when I used the word "demand", but we would like for you to place us on your next meeting so we can be attend here to the C D B G meetings. And I have my vice president will give you a little bit more information why we want. And this group has accomplished many things. We, back in 1992, say no to drugs. We have had Martha Luther King parades. We have given out scholarships to graduates. And we have had to sign recently Martha Luther King on 405 and South Street. So this group is moving. So we would like your help to help us move forward in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say you want to be placed on the agenda, can you just clarify, are you all wanting to request to receive funds from the C B D G funding? Is that what you're trying to do?
I'm going to have a curfew.
Okay, okay.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Davis, longtime resident of Titusville. And I want to just congratulate you again, Mr. Mayor and the new council member here at the council, as well as established council members that are here. I'm a resident here. I live on Hickory Park Drive here in Titusville. I grew up here when the Titusville High School. I'm also a member of the Historic Preservation Board, is an alternate member currently. And I can't add any more than what Lynn Golden just, just mentioned about the concerns of the Concerned Citizens organization here in Titusville. The thing I want to highlight, though, has to do with a recent study that we just completed regards to the Joinaville Project. And I just picked up the final version of the study just yesterday. And as I understand it, the demand has been very high on getting this copy and getting it for review and study. And I want to thank the city of Titusville, particularly Brad Parrish, who is part of the city planning organization, and Tony Shuffalo, Shuffalo, who is also a co-member of the Historic Preservation Board, and pushing this forward. The idea, though, that we would like to discuss at the next meeting has to do with this and other items that are of interest. I don't want this to be the last thing that we do as part of the Joinaville Historic Preservation, I mean Historic Project. We want to have it as a establishment, a platform, a foundation to move it forward, and those things we'll highlight at the next meeting. And that's all I had to add to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Member Stokel?
Yeah. Would you be able to answer that question? It sounded like you guys wanted to be on the agenda for our meeting next week, but I'm not sure, are you guys requesting funds? Are you wanting to request funds in the future? Or what would you, what would you like to do?
Well, there are some clarifications that we're going to need.
Okay.
The budgetary requirements for the Community Development, Building Development Fund. There's some questions that have been outstanding. Just to give you an example, I left here in 1975. I was a member of the military for about 25 years. I come back. Not much has changed since the time that I left. And it's just curious that this program has existed for that time up till now. And if you look in the community, and I know there are programs that have helped individuals, women's program, housing programs and the like, elderly programs. But as far as infrastructure, as far as any semblance of any change or anything of that nature, it's just, just not apparent. And I think the reason why there's not more involvement from the community is a lot of apathy because there's like the idea that nothing's going to happen. And I want to be a part of having things happen. There are three types of people. People that make things happen, people that watch things happen, and people that wonder what happened. So I want to be part of the people that we're going to make some things happen so that hopefully encourage people to get more involved, dispense with a lot of the apathy that's about, and the, just the lack of knowledge of what's going on in the community. So that's part and parcel of what we want to talk about at our next meeting. And as far as the budget, again, we have those questions, and we'll be bringing those forward.
Okay. So I think it sounds like you guys want to come to the meeting. I think there'll be a part for a public comment. I think it would be good for you guys to see the presenters at that. And I've talked to other nonprofits that have been interested in applying for those funds, and there's certain rules. So I think maybe just continuing that discussion and seeing who is getting the money, what do you have to do, what qualifications do you have to meet in order to attain some of those funding? And see if there's things that we can do to try to help maybe bring awareness to those funds as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that special meeting for the C B D G and SHIP is scheduled for the 3rd of December.
Next month, next week, right? Yeah, next week. Perfect.
Hold on, Kurt. Don't go anywhere yet.
Just one question. I'm, I'm still.
Hey, you're, you're jumping the line.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Don't make me bang the gavel. First of all, thank you for, for coming up here. And I'm very connected to the nonprofit community and also know various different sources of funding here in Brevard County. So please reach out to me after the meeting because I'm a very big advocate for all of our nonprofits here in Titusville, and I'd love to, to help you expand your mission and what you're all trying to do. So thank you. With that being said, we turn yours off. I was just making sure. Vice Mayor Cole?
Cool. Respect your elders. Kurt, I'm still trying to understand. You want to be on our agenda in two weeks? Or do you want to, I'm, I'm not sure exactly. You want to give a presentation to us on the things that you do? Or what, what is your request for?
Okay, just a point of clarification. It's, for me, it's just an informational grab. There are some things that we've been discussing. We haven't come out to any finalization on specifics other than a general understanding of the budgets, the funds. There are other ancillary, I mean ancillary budgets that we've talked about that involve the community under the HUD umbrella. So it, there's, there's a number of things, but we will be putting together our points, our questions, or our, our statements coming forward.
So basically, you want to be on the agenda for our next meeting? So you can give a presentation?
That's the bottom line of that, just to get on the agenda.
Okay, okay.
Thank you very much, sir. Yep, still petitions and requests.
Good evening, council. My name is Ruth Coffold. I am the Executive Director for Citizens Defending Freedom of Brevard County. I'm the Brevard County Constitution Coach, and I'm also a Salt and Light affiliate with the Salt and Light Council. I'm here today to provide some baseline definitions for you. Congratulations to all of you that are restarting this new council. I'm going to call that a brand-new day. Okay? We're at a brand-new day, and let's get started, and let's go. So a republic is a state in which the sovereign power is lodged and the representatives elected by the people. It differs from a democracy or democratic state in which the people exercise the powers of sovereignty in person. A tyrant is one who exercises unjust and/or oppressive power. With my experience in teaching over 200-plus citizens of Brevard County the Constitution, article by article, which no offense meant to any lawyer in the room, but no, there's only three universities in the nation that teaches the Constitution, article by article, and those are Hillsdale, Regent, and Liberty. Every other one only teaches constitutional law, which is not addressing the Constitution in Article III. Therefore, I want to inform and educate the council that council members are leaders of the community. A leader is a servant. And those that lead are to serve the citizens of Titusville, not bring a lawsuit waiting and wasting tax dollars. I want to help you understand that you, as a new council, can clean up this mess created by the previous council and dragging on since 2022. This council was, in 2023, told by a judge to perform the instructions of your boss, the citizens of Titusville, to update the Charter Amendment for the right to clean water by 82% of Titusville voters. Now understand, 82% of any voter electorate is a big deal, as we now know. So the council was instructed by the voters and solidified by the court to uphold the Charter Amendment and to protect these precious water resources. So again, it's a brand-new day. Start this council with a good faith effort, dissolve all of these issues regarding this, and stop wasting money. There's lots of money. And Exodus 1821 told us that we are to elect representatives who hate dishonest game, fear God, and have a biblical worldview. Your oath to God to uphold the U.S. Florida Constitution, the rules and ordinance and charter of Titusville deems that so when you put your hand on that Bible. Thank you very much.
Sorry. I would, I just want to go back to.
Did you, I didn't see it. If you did, I'm sorry. No, I, go ahead.
Sorry. I want to go back to the Concerned Citizens Group. I want, I wanted to say this after Mr. Kirk sat down. I'm not sure what it would look like to be on the agenda, but I would like to, because I don't think we discussed, I don't know if we got it on the agenda, if that's going to happen. And I want to make sure that whatever it is that they would like to discuss, that that does get on the agenda. And so whether we figure that out later this week, I think it's important that they came together, they have a vision, and I think it needs to be shared with the community.
So I will need a vote to add an agenda item, but I think what I heard is they want to do a presentation to council? Is that what I understand?
I, I, no, I don't think that's what I heard. No.
Presentation. It's, it's just a.
You want to come back to the mic? Yeah, I, maybe if I can. It sounded to me like you guys are letting us know that you are looking to get more informed. You may be at that meeting next week. You want to see the process, and then you will let us know later.
Yep.
Yes, yes. And see, and then at that time, you may want to request something. But at, right now, you don't have a formal presentation.
Right, like I said, it's a work in progress, so. Just bear with us, be a little patient. There's some loose ends we have to tidy up, okay? And it's just a matter of just getting on the agenda. We're going to work out the details, and then we'll bring that to the table the next meeting. The idea, though, is just to get it out in the open that this is our desire. And to make sure that if we are able to come to an agreement amongst ourselves, we'll share that with the city council and the rest of the city in terms of our outlook, in terms of our goals, and hopefully some accomplishments. And the only thing here is just that to stress that there are some things that we've started. We don't want it to sort of die on the vine, so to speak. Want to keep the momentum going forward. But the idea is just getting the word out so people are aware of what's going on in their community and the things that have happened, and to build on those things. And to get a critical mass to move forward with other items that may be of interest of the community to be done in the city of Titusville, whether it be through the CDBG funding or through HUD, the program under that, the NRSA program. And those are the things we want to bring to the table. It's just that it seems that it's been a benign neglect. I hate to use that term. But just as an observation, not a criticism. But it's just imagine going away for a length of time. And you see development all over the county. When we left here, there was no Palm Bay. I come back here, it's the largest city in the county. And I look at my hometown of Titusville. What has been the progress over that span of time? And I'm looking at things now, and it just doesn't seem it has come far enough. There's a lot of issues I won't get involved in right now. It's not my place. Because there's a lot of development going on. There are a lot of infrastructure issues that are going on. And that's a larger problem for the entire city of Titusville. So I leave that to others in terms of dealing with those items. But as far as the black community, we want to make sure that we get the word out within the community to come out and help be part of the process of moving the community forward, to stay in line with the rest of the growth of Titusville.
Thank you. Does that answer a question, Councilmember?
Got to answer mine.
It's fine.
Yeah. I'm just trying to understand whether you want to be on the agenda to give a presentation.
Yes, yes.
That's what you want?
We want to be on the agenda, yes, yes. That's it.
So if it's a presentation, the next presentation meeting is scheduled for the 28th of January.
No, they want to be on the CBG.
The CBDG is already scheduled. That's on the 3rd of December.
So.
Can I have a motion to add their organization?
It's already been published.
So they can't do it because it's already been published?
There will be a portion of time for petitions and requests at that meeting. And I think to the city manager's point is, if you guys would like to do a formal presentation, that would happen at the January meeting. So is the deadline already passed for applications for to request funding?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not. But there is a speaking portion of that meeting as well. I know that we have the presenters of the CBDG requests for grants. We have an update on the SHIP program from Terry. And then there is an opportunity to have petitions and requests.
Just from doing it in the past, I don't know. I would venture to say the deadline has passed just because if the agenda is already published, typically what happens at those meetings is those that have applied have the opportunity to now present why they're applying, how much they're asking for. And then there will be that open discussion. So I think that.
Okay, I was going to ask a question like tonight's meeting. We had an agenda, and we had this section that we're addressing right now as part of that agenda. That's something that's not available at the next meeting? Is that what you're telling me?
There is a portion of petitions and requests at the 3rd of December meeting as well.
Yes, there is that section. But what I think Members Mascosa was trying to do is get you added on to the earlier portion of that meeting, which unfortunately, it doesn't seem like can happen at this point. But you can still be there, and you can still speak at that meeting during petitions and requests.
Oh, sure, okay. That's fair.
And then if you do decide you want a formal presentation that's longer than the petitions and requests, we could then add it to our January presentation meeting. So you guys can present with more time. So there will be opportunity.
All right, it's fine.
And that the petitions and requests is only three minutes. Okay, so I don't know if you're going to be able to present everything you want to at petitions and requests.
Well, we can do sort of like an outline. And then in February, January, we can do the full presentation, if that's okay.
Sure, you can bring any documentation for council and pass it out, anything that would help you get your message out in that regard. And you can always ask for more time as well.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you so much, sir. I hope that clears up everything, and we're looking forward to hearing more from your organization.
Move this mic down so I can be heard. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. And I think I'm going to be addressing a bit of the elephant in the room for some of us. I grew up in Malden, Massachusetts, a small city on the outskirts of Boston. My father was a police officer. My uncle was a police officer. And my next-door neighbor was a police officer. These men were honorable men who cared deeply for their community. I have to say, I'm embarrassed to live in a city where it appears the only way the new mayor was able to be elected was either by actively colluding with the police department or misleading them in his description of an alleged petty theft of private property. Mr. Connors, you accused Ms. Conklin of stealing your campaign signs and charged her with petty theft, leading people to believe that she took some of those red signs we've seen everywhere in Titusville. But the reality is, the sign was actually a distorted image of your opponent with misleading information and no discernible information of ownership. This is more accurately described as an abandoned sign than a true campaign sign. The media blitz following your charges was unprecedented for petty theft and highly unusual, resulting in a slur campaign which damaged your opponent and allowed you to squeak by to win the election. While I am confident that the truth will come out in the end, your actions and those of some members of the Titusville Police Department caused irreparable damage to your opponent and are a clear case of election interference. Now, this election has created a crisis of faith for the citizens in Titusville. And I'm requesting that the city council, as representatives of this community, and we just heard about that is your role, and in your role of protecting the city, hire an independent investigator so we will know the truth about what happened in this campaign. I am not asking the members here to pass judgment on Mr. Connors. But citizens are very upset about the actions during the election. And in order to regain their confidence, I quite honestly believe it's your responsibility to the people you serve and the least you can do. And assuming all goes, that shows you didn't do anything wrong, this should be very rewarding to you. There's a well-known saying that states "the only necessary thing for evil to triumph in this world is that good men do nothing." Don't let that be the situation in Titusville. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
161 years ago, President Abraham Lincoln at the Gettysburg Address said, "This nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom that government, of the people, by the people, and for the people, shall not perish from this earth." Democracy is a system of government where the people have the power, and their decisions, either directly or indirectly through elected representatives, are made. In a direct democracy, citizens participate directly in making the public decisions without the use of elected officials. In a representative democracy, citizens elect representatives, not leaders. I don't need to be led, I'm a grown-up. I need a representative. Ms. Mascosa, you're doing a fantastic job of that. That being said, the people walked all over this city, gathered petitions, got the right to clean water on our ballot, which we had a constitutional right to do. We passed that by 82%. It's unheard of. The will is clear. What the people want is clear. It was clear then, it's clear now. And no amount of bashing citizens, no amount of bashing judges is going to change that. Amend the charter, do right by the people in this city, and stop suing our citizens with our own tax dollars.
Thank you.
Michael Majak, Titusville, Florida. I'm also the Secretary for theRightToCleanWater.org, a statewide amendment to put the right to clean water in our state constitution, just as it was supposed to be put in Titusville until our city attorney convinced you that it wasn't clear. But yet Judge Holcomb said anybody, with all their faculties intact and a voting age, would clearly understand the right to clean water. But no, Member Nelson complained that we had an issue because Orange County fought on the basis of the rights of clean water. And the state preempted that. And so we wrote our amendment to not include the rights of water, but only to include the rights to water. And I would have you know that that is also in the Orange County Charter. Right now, you can go to municode.com. On your little computers, it's only three clicks away. Just go to Florida, go to Orlando, look up the Orange County Charter. And Section 7, 704.1 is the right to clean water. Now, Mayor, you said you were for the right to clean water.
Yes.
The right to clean water is on your table. All you have to do is approve it. But I'll tell you what. The reason that it hasn't gotten great fanfare is because in Orange County, they fought for the right of water. But they never made the fight for clean water. Their right was never challenged. So you might call it a right by omission because they did remove the rights of water. But the rights to water for the citizens in Section 402, 40, excuse me, 704.1A2 still stands. The citizens of Orange County have the right to clean water. We're second place now. So whether you approve it now and end this fight, or whether we wait until the appellate court tells you to do the same, it's the right. And as Judge Polk said, it's our city's right and belongs in our charter as of the 4th of November, 2022. Please move that forward. Thank you. And oh, by the way, if you don't, we'll go to the Supreme Court. We'll take it to the nation. We're already working with others throughout the country to create more green amendments. So this will pass. The only people that have anything to fear are those that are polluting. Is the city a polluter? You should be behind this with us to stop people polluting our lagoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before I get carried away, I want to read this real quick. This is Florida Statute 112.311. The Council Ray, I live in Titusville, concerning the Council, Article 2, Section 12. You are, quote, "the governing body of the city which will exercise all the legislative and judicial powers of the city," unquote. Good evening, and once again, thank you for your time and consideration regarding the excessively loud F-150 white pickup truck in Gardendale. This is my seventh meeting, requesting you to enforce your own codes and laws that exist. I'm not making these up out of thin air. You already know them. I wanted to say that if I happened to see any of you in a bar or a restaurant, I would send you a drink, despite what I must say. Many people have approached me sympathizing and are bewildered as to why you cannot do your jobs and enforce your codes and laws. Someone, a city employee, also told me that this is up to you to enforce it. Some of you are very educated. Some of you sit on boards at institutions, such as hospitals. And all of you know that long-term sleep deprivation is very negative health-wise. I don't have a deep pocket to sue you. But if I did, after seven meetings, what do I have to do? Some of you have run for another term. And some of you who aren't here tonight, other positions. It is my shared belief that those people, not you and not you, have been useless. And perhaps you are really just puppets for the city manager. At this point, these are my true thoughts. You helped the lady with the flooding issue near a rock pit in Tropic immediately. And I agree, you should have helped her. She even got sod. You not only put berm up, she got sod on top of the berm, which I think is wonderful. And other residents, excuse me. Yet no building is required here.
Can you please wrap up your thought, please?
Yeah, I can. You gave a lot of other people a longer time, so I appreciate it. You helped other residents, yet no building is required here to help myself immediately and other residents subjected to this disturbance since February, which directly affects our welfare, peace, quiet, health, and safety. You have built three pavilions on South Delion that no one uses. I have never seen people sit there. I don't know how many thousands of dollars that cost for the pavilion, the concrete bench, the concrete trash can, the concrete slab. Why no enforcement? That's the question. Why no enforcement? Is because the truck owner is indeed politically tied in and/or, quote, "friends with the cops," unquote, as he told me? Is that what's going on? Is the city manager the Wizard of Oz, the man behind the curtain, who will not allow you to do the right thing for tax-paying residents? Is that what's going on? Please, you or Mr. Larisse, kindly explain why you will not enforce and end this health and welfare-related issue. I want to be placed on the agenda for the next meeting. And last thing, I talked about this a month ago. These papers are still being littered all over the place. You listen to me, nobody did anything. And all these things get crunched up because people are too lazy to pick them up, quite a few of them. And they go into the storm sewers, which just goes into the lagoon. So I'd like to be placed on the agenda.
Thank you for your time.
Can I be placed on the agenda, yes or no?
I do not prepare the agenda. I don't see a motion to put you on the agenda, so I thank you for your time.
Mayor, I do have a comment. Since I am new to the council, and I think I know that you have been here seven times, and I'm sorry that this hasn't, that you're continuing to have the problem. Glenn, I would love to go out. I'm available all next week and see this so that I can understand this situation. So after the holidays, please, we can figure out a time that I can go out with you and see, so that I can fully understand the situation, if that's possible. Thank you. And that's all I can offer you right now. I want to be able to understand and to see the ordinance and all of those things. So that's what I can offer you as a new council member, just to go out with you and to try to understand.
Well, I think you should be mayor your way ahead of everybody else.
Maybe in four years. Thank you for that. And any other petitions and requests? All right, with that, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Council, we are now on consent agenda. Let me make sure that they're ready in the back. There we go. Consent agenda items A through I. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff for consent? Counsel, do you want to pull any of the items for further discussion? City Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
Yes, sir. We have two cards, both for item 8A.
And Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda item 8A, authorize the mayor to sign the 2024 Tree City USA application. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the right-of-way vacation application number 3-2020 extension request. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the right-of-way vacation application 4-2020 extension request. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the award of the code enforcement special magistrate selection. Consent agenda item 8E, authorize the city manager execute task order GE0W003 with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for resiliency Florida planning. Consent agenda item 8F, approve resolution 26, 2024, approving the temporary road closure of state roads for special events, which is the Christmas parade, the December 14th, 2024. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the fiscal year FY 2024 budget carryover, carryforward list for machinery and equipment. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the use of Orange County School Board contract ITB 2004132 for environmental remediation services. And consent agenda item 8I, approve the contract for city dark fiber with Spectrum Enterprises.
All righty. Call the card, please.
Yes, sir. First person is Michael Mijak, item 8A.
I've been muted. Michael Mijak, Titusville. Chairman of the Titusville Environmental Commission and the Titusville Tree Board. So, last year, we discussed the issues of what's required by the tree board. And item number three is a community forest program with an annual budget of $2 per capita. We're required to have that budget. We don't have it. And I, well, if you want to be a tree city, we need that budget. And if you apply for tree city and don't give us that budget, I will write to them and tell them because this is one of their four requirements. So, we're a tree city. You want to be a tree city, let's be a tree city. Because your tree board provided you with an urban forest plan, which the previous council said, no, we'll go spend $80,000 on a consultant instead, when we already had one, produced by your tree board, as required by Tree City USA. So, if you want to be a tree city, which I truly do, you better apply the budget accordingly and allow your tree board to figure out where and how to plant, prune, cut, and clean up our trees. That's all we want to do. So, please, if you go forward, you better give us the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Moscoso.
Mr. Parrish, I noticed in the report, it says that we're spending for, I think it's $4.08 per capita. Can you explain what we're spending that on? And how many trees are being planted?
That would be for Kevin.
For Kevin, I'm sorry. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, so the calculation is based on our right-of-way maintenance crews, their management, their equipment, operating. We chair all the right-of-ways of the city, some of the state roads as well. I don't know if Brad has the breakdown of what was planted. But the, the calculation of the dollar figures is based upon our staffing, the money spent on materials and equipment, a portion of.
And how many trees were planted?
Just give me one moment, I can bring that up for you. So, the latest count is we have six trees that were planted in 2024.
And what was the total budget?
There's tree planting and initial care of $1,920, tree maintenance of $130,000-plus dollars, tree removals, $18,000-plus, and management, $54,000-plus.
That's for six trees?
No, ma'am, that's for planting, maintenance, removal, and management.
So, I was kind of looking at what other cities were doing, and this might be something that the TEC could look into, is that certain cities, they actually allocate a percentage for the actual tree planting. And so, one of them was 20% to 30% of the budget, and it was to balance the growth of tree canopy and the maintenance and care. And so, I understand that a lot of that money that we are spending is for the maintenance of trees, but I would love to see that this budget actually go towards tree planting. And so, perhaps that's something we can discuss, that a percentage would be required. And you might have more information, and we might be doing that.
Last year, this was discussed, and there were options that were brought before the city council. The option they decided to go with was to submit an application for the urban forestry plan and grant with the state. That was done. We have been waiting from them for several months now for responses to status of that application, of that grant. That grant was for us to determine, to create an urban forestry management plan with policies and goals such as that. I have reached out to the state several times. They've been delaying their announcement of that grant program, mainly for a variety of reasons. The most latest is because of the hurricane impact to the state. They've been busy with that. And so, they, they were initially supposed to give us an announcement in September. And so far, we have not received that. So, that's what we're waiting on, but that was the decision that city council made it last year, to go forward with a grant, to hire an expert to help us create a plan with policies.
I mean, for me personally, I, I mean, I love that we're, we're hiring out, but I would just love to just plant the trees. To be honest, I think that needs to be our priority. And so, I would like to possibly see a breakdown of the, the percentages and things. And what can we do while we're waiting for these grants to prepare for this? As, you know, maybe we can involve the TEC since this is their expertise. This is not my area of expertise, but I, I, just the numbers don't seem right to me that we've only planted six trees last year.
But it's, it's something we can work with the TEC to see what else we can, that can be recommended back to you as a board, as a council, to make a decision. I'm just reiterating what was decided by city council last year, was to go forward with a grant, to try and come up with something. To come up with policies and procedures, or even a planting program of some sort, and even a strategy of where best to actually do plantings, if at all. Be aware, though, plantings come with maintenance costs. It's not just a one-time planting. There is an annual cost of that as well.
Member Stokel.
Yep, just to speak to the history of that a little bit. I think our decision at that time, I don't want to speak for the entire council, but to that point is, I think we agree with you. It's, we want to do it strategically. We also have had complaints of dead trees in places that look blighted and not kept up with. So, I think there is an appropriate balance there. But I, I think we didn't just, we didn't want to just go plant trees to plant trees. We wanted to be strategic about it. Where are the spaces? What would be best? What makes sense? What can we maintain? And what does that look like? So, we can come up potentially with a, a manageable percentage and do it well, if, if that makes sense. So, that's kind of, I think, what the thought process was prior. So, I think that, yes, we would like to plant trees, but we want to make sure that it's done correctly with a plan.
Any other discussion? Any other cards?
Yes, sir. One more card, Kay St. Ange, and she had the handout that was distributed to you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Yes, Kay St. Ange, Maryland Avenue. The city of Titusville has been a Tree City USA community for 23 years. This is highly commendable. Earlier grants provided a master plan and an urban canopy tree assessment. Both called for robust tree planting initiatives, but those have not gone forward. The grant juris that has recently been submitted for is not for tree planting, but for another master plan, which probably will also say the city should go forth with tree planting initiatives. So, Tree City USA website indicates, quote, "A city that takes care of its trees takes care of its people," end quote. The report to council for this agenda item indicates the requirements to earn the designation of a Tree City USA community includes, and I'm quoting the report to council, manage a community forestry program with an annual budget of $2 per capita. This program consists of public works efforts to maintain the trees within city right-of-ways and other public spaces. Public works department is required to submit the budget that you have received to Tree City USA annually. As you can see, the left-hand column indicates that in 2023, that's the latest that I have, public works removed 50 trees, but planted no trees whatsoever. Apparently, last year, they planted six trees. How can you maintain the trees within city right-of-ways if you continue to remove more than you plant? You can see in the budget that for several years, very few trees have been planted with very little of the $2 per capita spent on planting trees, yet large expenditures were made for tree removal. What is needed is for the city to plant more trees within the city right-of-ways and public spaces again. How can you maintain the trees within the city right-of-way if you continue to remove more trees than you plant? The Tree City USA standard 3 indicates, quote, "The community must document at least $2 per capita towards the planting and care and removal of city trees." But planting is the first thing they mention. Tree City says that city trees provide many benefits, clean air, clean water, shade, and beauty, to name a few. Trees reduce temperatures in cities such as Titusville. Reduce temperatures encourage residents to spend more time outside exercising, thus improving residents' physical health and mental health by reducing stress. Reduced stress results in less crime. I have background information, I could tell you where I received that information. Trees beautify our cities while reducing polluted stormwater runoff into the lagoon. The lagoon generates over $7 million annually to our region. Please, may I have another sentence or two?
Please.
Thank you. Very good. That's what the Tree City USA means when it says, "A city take, that takes care of its trees, takes care of its people." By taking care of the trees, you take care of the lagoon that provides all that money for our community. Fulfill all Tree City USA standards. Plant more trees to maintain and increase the trees within cities' right-of-ways and other public spaces for the benefit of our residents. And with, again, how can you maintain the trees within the cities' right-of-ways if you continue to remove more trees than you plant? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Any other cards? Member Stokel.
Yep, move to approve item, consent agenda item 8A through I.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Member Moscoso? Yes. Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Onto 9A, which is ordinance number 45, 2024, consolidated fees for development applications and legal advertising. City council tabled the first reading of this ordinance at the regular city council meeting on November 12th. Therefore, the recommended action is to table the public hearing and hold the first reading at this meeting.
Are you going to read it?
That's it.
Okay. Onto the next item.
Devote to table.
Sorry, can I have a motion?
I just wanted to clarify, are we tabling this one to December 10th?
That's correct.
Okay. Move to table item 9A to December 10th.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's the 6:30 meeting.
Yep. And it will be the se, public hearing and second reading.
Any cards? Can I have a vote, please?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Item 9B, which is ordinance number 46, 2024, Willow Creek Community Development District, CDD contractual amendment. City council tabled this first reading at, of this ordinance at the regular city council meeting on November 12th, 2024. Therefore, the recommended action is to table the public hearing to December 10th and hold the first public reading at this meeting.
Move to table item 9B, ordinance number 46-2024, the public hearing and second reading to December 10th.
Second.
Any cards?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All right, can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Onto item 9C, which is ordinance number 47, 2024, Willow Creek II Community Development District Establishment. City council tabled the first reading of this ordinance at the regular city council meeting on November 12th, 2024. Therefore, the recommended action is to table the public hearing to December 10th at 6:30 and hold the first regular meeting at this meeting.
Move to table item 9C, ordinance number 47-2024, the public hearing and second reading to December 10th.
Second.
Any cards? Any discussion? Can I have a vote, please?
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Onto item 9D, which is Live Local Property Tax Exemption Resolution Number 22, 2024. During the 2024 legislative session, House Bill 7073 was passed and signed into law by Governor DeSantis, which created Section 196.197830 Florida statutes. This section allows a taxing authority to elect to opt out of the state law Florida statutes that provide certain affordable housing properties ad valorem tax exemptions if certain conditions are met. The taxing authority must make findings in an ordinance or resolution that mo, that most recently published Schimberg's Center for Housing Studies Annual Report Prepared pursuant to Section 420-dash, or dot 6075 of Florida statutes identifies that the city is part of the jurisdiction of the taxing authority, is within the Metropolitan Statistical Area, MSA, or region where the number of affordable housing available units in the MSA or region is greater than the number of rental households within the MSA or regional or category entitled. The most recent Schippen, Schimberg Study for Housing Studies Annual Report 2023 shows the number of affordable housing units is greater than the number of rental units in the Palm Bay, Melbourne, and Titusville MSA. Staff is recommending that city council adopt Resolution 22, 2024 to opt out of the live local property tax exemption for Section 196.7197830 of Florida statutes.
Thank you, city manager. Any cards?
Yes, sir. We have two cards. The first is Ms. Toni Shifalo.
Shifalo, Historic Norwood House. First of all, I want to congratulate staff. They hit it right on this one. And opt out? Yes. There are plenty of incentives for those serious about building affordable housing. Just read the ordinances and the regulations. The city is giving bonus density and height and setback removals for next to nothing, as it is, under the Affordable Housing Act, give, and the Live Local. So, giving tax incentives to developers who do not intend to build actual affordable housing is robbing the citizens of money that could go to our infrastructure. And don't forget, the citizens are your constituents. We vote for you. The lack of extra incentives in the form of tax abatement will not stop an entity intent on building true affordable housing. Those nonprofits are going to come in, they are going to build with a tax incentive or not. So, don't give them just a tax incentive. Take up the state on their generous offer to allow you to keep tax dollars and, and put them into your budget. So, go with staff on this one. Opt out. Opt out.
Thank you, Ms. Toni. Next card.
Yes, sir. Kason Childs.
Hello, Kason Childs, 476 Fern. I'm for opting out, too. There's too many places that we want to keep for our single-family home developments. And basically, we want to keep it here for the decisions that the Titusville residents want to develop. We shouldn't be sending it off to Tallahassee, anyway. That's it. Please opt out. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kason. Any discussion? Seeing none. Can I have a motion?
Yes, I moved that the Live Local Property Tax Exemption Resolution Number 22, 2024, that we adopt the resolution out of the Live Local Property Tax Exemption per Section 196.197830 Florida statutes.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole with the motion, and Member Stokel with the second. Can I have a vote, please?
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Woo, we're not in the Live Local!
Onto ordinance's first reading. This is item 10A, which is ordinance number 45, 2024, Consolidated Fees for Development Applications and Legal Advertising Ordinance. City attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 45, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending community development fees, by amending development review procedures manual, section 17.1, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning rezoning, conditional use permits, development review committee and master plan fees. 17.4, board of adjustments and appeals fees. 17.5, development agreement vested rights application beneficial use determination, transfer of development rights, administrative waiver. And 17.6, vacating rights of way and easements, streets renaming, by adding a new section 17.8, building relocation pursuant to Chapter 610, Buildings and Building Regulations Amendments, to provide a building relocation fee. By renumbering and amending section 17.8 fee refund waiver policy to be section 17.9, and by adding a new section 17.10, special circumstances, authorizing city to collect fees equal to cost if new advertising requirements are created, providing for findings, severability, repeal conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
On November 12th, 2024, city council tabled the first reading to the regular city council meeting tonight. The public hearing will be scheduled for the regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2024 at 6:30. On November 6th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 70.
Thank you.
Onto item number 10B. Oh, cards? Okay. Thank you on that, Richard. Item 10B, which is ordinance number 46, 2024, Willow Creek Development, Community Development District, CDD contractual amendment. City attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number 46, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending an ordinance number 88, 2005, and contracting the boundary of the Willow Creek Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, 2024, providing a title, providing findings, describing the amended external boundaries of the district, describing the functions and powers of the district, providing for notice requirements, providing for severability, providing for administrative correction of the scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
On November 12th, city council tabled the first reading to the regular city council meeting tonight. The public hearing will be scheduled for the regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2024 at 6:30. And we are on to item...
Any cards?
Oh, cards, sorry.
Yes, excuse me. I believe the petitioner or the applicant, Patrick Collins, has submitted a card. I'm not sure if that was her, in case there was any questions.
All right. He passed. City manager?
Onto item 10C, which is ordinance number 47, 2024, Willow Creek II Community Development District, CDD establishment. And city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 47, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, granting a petition to establish the Willow Creek II Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, 2024, concerning that approximately 425.15 plus-minus acres of land, providing a title describing the petition to establish the Willow Creek II Community Development District, creating and naming the district, providing findings, describing the functions and powers of the district, providing for notice requirements, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the district's board of supervisors, providing for severability, providing for administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date.
On November 12th, 2024, city council tabled the first reading to the regular city council meeting tonight. The public hearing will be scheduled for the regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2024 at 6:30.
Any cards?
The petitioner, Patrick Collins.
City manager?
Onto ordinance number 48, we're on item 10D, ordinance number 48, 2024, the annual update of the five-year capital improvement schedule, 2025 to 2029, relating to the capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan CPA application number 3-2024. And the city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 48, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville for the 2025-2029 horizon, relating to the capital improvement element and providing for an effective date.
This is a legislative item. The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2024 at 6:30. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, will consider this item at the regular meeting on December 4th, 2024.
Any cards?
Yes, sir.
City manager?
Onto item 10E, which is ordinance number 49, 2024, granting a franchise to pivotal utilities, utilities holding Inc., DVA Florida Gas. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 49, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, granting to pivotal utility Holdings Inc., doing business as Florida City Gas successors and assigns a non-exclusive gas franchise, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for adoption of representations, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on December 10th, 2024 at 6:30.
Any cards?
Yes, sir.
City manager?
We are moving all to item 12A, which is the update of city council appointments to serve on outside agencies. Now, in your agenda, you have the blanks for each one of the external agencies. Jolynn just passed out the, the filled-in document, if you will. And on the back, Jolynn, I don't know if you added those. Okay, so, those are all complete for your consideration for your outside board appointments.
So, I guess I'll take lead in facilitating this discussion. I guess we're all in agreement that... I guess we're all in agreement that Member Nelson just gets stuck on whatever board we choose, right? No, I think it's fair to try to keep her on some things that she has been on. But does anybody have something they're super passionate about? Sarah, I obviously know you're really passionate about the League of Cities, and I'll let you kick it off there so we can just start at the top and work our way down.
Yes, thank you. So Florida League of Cities, the top one, I am fine still being on there. I'm currently a board member for the Florida League of Cities. But what this actually is, is we have to have a representative from our city that attends the meetings and is a voting member as well in addition. So like, it doesn't matter that I'm a board member. But since I am on the board at the state and I was appointed to that, we get two people from our county that get to do that. I will be there already, so I think that was the intent behind there. So I'm fine doing that because I'm already there as a board member. But to piggyback off that, the second one, I can't, I'm going to be president next year for the Space Coast League of Cities. And our president, vice president, treasurer, and I believe our past president, they all get voting privileges in addition to a representative from the city. So I can't really double dip there. So that is why we had Joe and Dan. So I cannot do that because we have an extra, we get two people essentially. So that is up to you all for that, I guess.
Member Moscoso?
Yes, I think that's great. I would be interested in the Space Coast League of Cities, where Joe Robinson sits right now, if that's open.
Any discussion?
All right. So yeah, I think, Megan, you can plug in there at the Space Coast League of Cities.
Mayor, you all need to move up to microphone a little bit.
Sorry.
Yep.
Sorry. Yeah, Megan, Space Coast League of Cities as our voting member along with Member Stokel. And we still get an alternate, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, I can't. I won't be on this second line at all.
I'm just confirming. And then we'll plug in Vice Mayor Cole at the alternate slot. But that still leaves us with the primary, which is the first, the Florida League of Cities. We have Dr. Sarah Stokel as our voting member. And our alternative, what do you think we throw in? Member Nelson right there?
Oh, my gosh. That's up to you guys. I, that one, I will say, just if you want to be on here as an alternate, and I said this at every meeting, like, I encourage all council members to try to attend the annual conference, the legislative conference, Legislative Action Days in Tallahassee. This will get you, so anybody, any of us can go to this. This will get you, if I can't go for some reason, you would be able to vote on items. So that's what that would do.
Yeah, I really kind of want to table this whole thing just because I feel bad...
I will say, that was my other thing as I was looking. I can't really do any other board except for the EDC because of my work schedule, and Jolynn's on that. And so like, I don't feel comfortable. One, I'd like to help out where I can, so that's the one I could do, but I don't want to take that from her if that's the one she wants. And then I don't know if she wants to kind of move around a little bit. I guess, yeah, that's kind of where I'm a little bit hesitant, I guess, to make final decisions without her. But I will say, I realized this when we, on the recess, I am flying back from a work trip on our next meeting, and I'm hoping to make it here in time, but there is a chance that I will not. So I did want to, if we do table that, I just want to make that clear. There's a chance I won't be at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just keep plugging along and see where we get and...
We can always make adjustments, is that correct?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, so I'll volunteer to plug in as the backup for the Florida League of Cities, if that's okay with everybody. Just because I feel bad throwing her in there in a place where you could end up traveling all the way around the state, so. Now, let's talk about Space Coast TPO, our primary member.
I think we, back to Space Coast League of Cities, I believe Member Moscoso has asked to be the...
Current? Yep.
Yeah.
And then we also have an alternate there.
Herman.
Yeah.
It's Herman. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We did that one, and we came back up to the backup for Sarah.
Okay, got it, thanks.
All right, Space Coast TPO, Herman, you still want to do that one?
Yes.
Any objection to that?
Now, the Space Coast TPO, the unique thing about this is we do have two voting members.
Yep. I volunteer to serve in that role. I have many things to discuss with the TPO. North Brevard?
So that will be Vice Mayor and the mayor. As the pri, who's the primary then?
Herman.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Vice Mayor Cole. North Brevard?
Wait, sorry, for the alternate. I, this is, I did this because we needed somebody, but if, I was going to say if Member Moscoso would like to do it, Thursday is at 9:00 AM, I am definitely at work, and so it would be not ideal for me to be a backup if she would like it. If she does not, I will still do it.
They don't meet at 9:00 AM in the morning, they meet at 1:30.
I will be at work still, yes.
But I'm just saying the time.
Okay, no, that's good to know. So I will...
I can be an alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, sorry, when I plugged in the two slots, in my mind, they were filled, and I didn't realize the alternate.
No, no, we had two voting members.
Oh, okay.
So we both get to vote, and then we need an alternate, which Member Moscoso will serve in. All right, now, we're all good on those so far, right?
So far, yep. Tracking with you.
And may I clarify, sir? The Space Coast TPO, Cole is primary, who is our alternate?
Mayor Connors.
Yes, sir, okay.
And then Member Moscoso will be our alternate. The challenge is all these boards work differently with different rules and...
They do, correct. Your Park and Rec now, one open primary position?
Yep.
And this is a liaison, this is a non-voting member?
Yep. I mean, I'll volunteer if nobody wants it. Does anybody else want it?
I got a note.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay, so Mayor Connors is on, correct? As the member, and then Member Nelson will be...
Member Nelson will be the alternate.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, now we're moving on to EDC. We have Jolynn as the voting member and Dan as the non-voting member.
I would, this is one, because of the scheduling, I, and I would enjoy this board, so I'd like to be on this, and I have no problem being the alternate if Jolynn still wants to be the regular one.
Member Moscoso, do you have anything to add? All right, well, let's be nice to Jolynn and throw her still on there, you know, we'll...
We can always change it.
I believe she does want to continue on that. She enjoys going to that one.
We'll have Member Stokel be the alternate. All right, North Brevard Economic Development Zone. Previously, it was Mayor Dan and Vice Mayor Joe. I'd be happy to serve in Dan's role as the representative to the embeds.
And this again is a liaison, non-voting member, and I attend this as well. So we're there primarily to answer questions.
Any discussion?
I'd like to be the alternate if possible.
Any, anything else to add? Okay. All right, Member Moscoso as the alternate. We are doing great.
And those carryover, those two positions carry over into the Space Port Commerce Park, which is the next item on the backside. That's, when you're on the embeds, you're also on that committee.
Do we have times and dates that they meet?
They really schedule them at their embeds meetings. They schedule that meeting periodically when they have enough of an agenda.
All right, so we're good on Space Port Commerce Park Authority. That is carryover, that is done. Affordable Housing Advisory Committee.
Okay, got it.
We have Vice Mayor Joe. Any discussion?
I'm not, Joe.
I was reading his name, I'm sorry.
I'm good, I'm good.
Let's not stretch the truth. Vice Mayor Cole will be serving as the primary voting member. Is there an alternate for that?
There hasn't been in the past, but that's up to council if they'd like to make an alternate.
Okay. Did you have any inclination serving on that or not?
If I had an alternate, you would just have to go if I could make it, I suspect.
Okay.
All right, any other things we need to point ourselves to?
That's it.
All righty, thank you very much, sir.
Excuse me. I'm so sorry. Going back to Space Coast TPO, I had heard two different assignments. Is that Connors and Moscoso, Space Coast TPO?
Space Coast TPO is Cole as the primary, Connors as a secondary, because we get two voting members. And then the alternate would be a Member Moscoso.
Got it, thank you.
And I think Jolynn will still stay as the second alternate. Is that...
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah.
To clarify.
That would make sense to have two alternates for two positions.
Yeah.
Anything else? Clarification? City Clerk, you're good?
Yes, sir.
All righty. And I believe that is...
Yeah, I don't know if you need to do cards on this, Jolynn.
Is there any cards?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, good.
All right. New Business 12B?
Onto New Business 12B, which is Parish Landing Water and Sewer, Sewers Agreement. Parish Landings is a proposed 62-lot, single-family residential community located off of Parish Road, west of Hammock Road and east of US-1. Being east of US-1, this property is located in close proximity to the Indian River Lagoon. In addition, without city of Titusville water and sewer services, the property would be developed with wells and septic tanks. Staff is recommending approval of the Utility Service and Voluntary Annexation Agreement to provide service to 62 single-family homes in the proposed Parish Landing subdivision to authorize the execution of the agreement by the mayor and defer the annexation to a future date to be determined by City Council, and the agreement is subject to the review of the City Attorney.
Are there any cards?
Yes, sir, one card, Chad Genoni.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Chad Genoni. I'm with the property owner, and we're here to request that the annexation, if, and after reading the staff report, it may be a moot point, but that it be delayed until after we record the final plat, because basically, we are ready to start construction on the project right now, within the next couple of weeks. And we have, we got our land development permit from the county. So I think it would be difficult to annex it while we're doing construction and before the plat is recorded. So that's, that's our request tonight.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Yep. Just to clarify, is that the way it is written currently, that it would be after? So that would, if we were to change our motion, we would need to add that. And then I do have a second follow-up question.
That's correct. Also, I've, the scrivener's error that I'd like to address?
Yes, that was my second question.
But to be consistent, Section 6, approximately in the middle of that section, it says, you know, "at such times and in such acreage until all the properties annexed as the city deems reasonably appropriate." And then the phrase, "and providing there are no costs to the owner," should be stricken. That was part of, that should be straightened out of scrivener's errors. It's not conditioned on no cost to the owner. That was a previous, that kind of is a carryover. So we're, I don't know if you have the agreement or not, but we're asking, is that, that provision that says this is contingent on there being no cost to the owner? That was another agreement, that's scrivener's error.
And that's as far as the cost of annexation?
No, 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 it just says that we're going, right, anything associated with the annexation, it says that there would be no cost to the owner. And what we have in there is that if this is approved, you would pay the cost to record it, at the recording fee. That's what...
Okay, no, yeah, absolutely.
But this said it was no cost to the owner, so I want to strike that.
Where is that section?
That was Section 6.
Okay, thank you.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7 line, 6th and 7th line down, where it says, "and providing there are no costs to the owner," that should be stricken.
Okay.
It does not, currently, as drafted, and I recommend it stay that way, is you can annex the property whenever you deem it appropriate, your discretion. Now, I know the applicant has asked to defer it until the plat is recorded. And that's entirely up to council if you want to agree that you would postpone it. My recommendation, if you do that, though, is to qualify it in the event it is not platted, which, so I would suggest some language possibly that the city would agree to postpone the processing of this application until the property is platted through Brevard County. However, in the event that the development permits associated with this property expire and the owner is no longer actively seeking to plat through the county, the city shall have the right to process this voluntary annexation at any time the city deems appropriate at its sole discretion. So you'd retain that right if you're inclined to postpone it for the plat, but in the event it's not platted, then we could still proceed with the annexation.
Do you have any objection to that?
That sounds very reasonable.
Can that language that you just said be repeated as part of the motion? Because mine was going to be shorter than that, but that's a little bit more inclusive of what I was hoping to do.
You can just add that with the City Manager's comments.
You can make anything part of your motion. So if you'd like that language part of your motion, you can certainly do that. If you'd like me to read that again, I can.
Yeah, so that, and that's kind of what I was getting at. My, one, I did not see this, the no cost thing, so thank you for clarifying that. My motion was going to be approved with the condition, I agree with you, giving them time to get it platted through the county. However, if that application does expire, as, and I'd like to use the terminology the City Attorney said, that the city, that we can still annex it in. And then I'd like to strike that line that says, "and providing there are no costs to owner" from this agreement. That would be my motion.
Second.
Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion, I have a second. Can you call a vote for me, please?
Excuse me. Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Onto petitions and requests from the public present non-agenda items.
This is not an agenda item. I'm Vicki Conklin in Royal Oak Drive, but it's regarding the Live Local Property Tax Exemption. I think we need some clarification with that, because I heard Mr. Connors say we're out of Live Local now, and I don't think that's what this intent was. So could somebody please explain that to him? Thank you.
Well, of course, the Live Local requirements in the statute still exist. This was a portion of the Live Local that had to do with the opt-out of taxation, but it does not address other issues of Live Local.
Thank you. Any other petitions or requests?
We have completed item 14 in the beginning of the meeting as requested, so...
Sorry.
And maybe not.
No, I just, I, again, on our break, I did want, just want to bring it up because I motioned it earlier. Given that I may miss next meeting and I motioned to table it, I just want to make that clear here with you guys. And I don't want to postpone it necessarily, but I'd like to be part of that discussion. So I guess my request would be, we can still keep it at the next meeting, but if I'm unable to make it, I would hope you guys would table it, or I can make a motion to table it to our first meeting in January, January 14th.
So are you talking about the 6A and C?
The two items that I motioned to table.
Which were under Boards and Commissions. As a reminder, the first item was the Board of Trustees for the General Employee Pension Plan. That was 6A.
Yes.
And then 6C was the Titusville Environmental Commission.
Yes.
So what you're asking is if...
To potentially...
I'll still put it on the agenda for the 10th, but if you're absent from that...
I would request that, if you guys don't mind, they're still serving, and I think that might be the direction that we would vote in anyway, but I just would like to be part of that discussion. I'm going to do my best to get here. I have a meeting in the morning, out of state. I'm hoping my flight will get here soon, but yes, I just want to make that clear.
Yep, I think that is a reasonable accommodation. City Manager?
So onto the City Manager's report. I have no action items. The Economic Development Strategic Plan has a focus group meeting that's scheduled for December 5th, 2024, at 5:00 PM at the Titusville Senior Center. And those are for interested stakeholders, and the consultant and the economic development director are asking for input into the city's economic development strategic plan. And the second is the Community Development Block Grant Special Meeting, which is scheduled for 3 December, 2024 at 5:30. for 3 December 2024 at 5:30. And as previously discussed, that will be the presentations for those people that have applied for grants, those organizations, and then there'll be an update on the ship program. Subject to questions, that completes my report.
Any questions? Any cards?
I do, sir.
Thank you.